Great. Okay, so we're gonna open the meeting for the Rally Plan Board for Wednesday, April 27th. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, which was an application for a site plan review for the construction of the construction landscaping office and storage building to be located at 968 Hayrow Street, property owned by J.M. Dunn LLC. It's in the Business Light Industrial Zoning District.
I'm sorry, that, um, I think you got, I think I sent you, you got the first one that I sent, but the, the one that's actually...
Oh, okay, so we're now on the, uh...
On the agenda.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the ZBA cases?
Yeah, the ZBA, 'cause the, the, we continued the, uh, the hearing to 8:30, so that's why we kinda had to push this.
I kinda liked your style of getting right into it.
Yeah, well, I was trying to get, knock it off as quick as I could. I saw, I saw a light agenda here. Alright, so given that we've got a half an hour to work on some other things, uh, let's, uh...
Appreciate it.
They asked, uh, the ZBA's asked us for, uh, comment on a couple of cases?
Yeah.
Is that what we have? Okay, so, uh, the first one is, uh, well, it's a special permit for Nine Walnut Street, uh, the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, and I actually, um, I'll show you this, I'll pass this around.
I'm just taking a packet here.
Yeah. And it's for nine, and these are comments which I was actually sending when you sent them on.
Probably not.
So, the, um, the one, the, that we're really dealing with, um, is the, I was just realizing, I had a problem with the, I, there, I was missing the one having to do with Nine Walnut, uh, Walnut Street, uh, but I do have comments that had to do with 804 Hayrow Street, which, uh, this is a second response. I'd already sent them comments, and John Moore actually had addressed those comments, and, um, the, uh, basically the comments that I'm sending out had to do with the, um, uh, just saying that, that there needed to be conditions put on, uh, to the, uh, to their, to their decision letter, having to do with the, um, uh, stockpiling of materials, outdoor lighting, um, and, uh, with the, uh, condition having to do with, uh, uh, the stockpiling of salt, and then, um, applicant, um, with the, uh, vehicle storage and equipment storage on-site. So, that was just a reiteration or a response to the previous, to the previous letter. Um, the, the next one was the, uh, ZBA case 968 Hayrow Street, um, and that had to do with, um, is that's the one where actually, you know, they had to get a municipal water supply protection district special permit, so that's what they're doing. They're, they're actually going to the ZBA tomorrow night in regards to that, and so, um, we took a look at the application, and I sent just a few comments back having to do, uh, with that, and then I'm also forwarding Larry's prior comments that he made, 'cause he caught some of the same stuff having to do with the water supply district, um, on his initial review, so I'm forwarding all that over to the ZBA for them to consider for tomorrow night. And then the Walnut Hill, uh, the Nine Walnut Hill is the one that you have on the map for...
Walnut Drive.
I'm sorry, Walnut Drive, um, but Nine Walnut Drive, so at the end of Nine Walnut Drive, that was the, uh, a town-owned property which was recently, they, it, it was a single-family house that was really, uh, nine feet from the property, the front property line, and, um, they are going...
It was town-owned?
It was town-owned. The town had acquired it and then auctioned it off.
Oh, okay.
And it was recently auctioned off, so now the, the owners wanted to demo the, the house that is there, that's nine feet from the property line, but they're wanting to put a new house, which, uh, included the specs there in the elevations, um, having to do with that. Um, and so they're proposing, now technically, the, um, you know, in order to be conforming, they would have to meet a setback of 50 feet, uh, but the, this is under the, um, a certain section of the bylaw which allows the zoning board of appeals to grant, um, a, a special permit for new residential construction, and as long as they show that it's not, um, that it's not being less non-conforming than, than before...
Than the prior use.
In this case, it's actually, they're increasing the conformity although it's not 100%.
So they're going, but they're at nine feet now, and this proposal is also nine feet?
This proposal is 15.
No, it's 15.
Fifteen, okay, gotcha.
But what is, what is a provision? So it authorizes, uh...
Yeah.
Then the ZBA to approve the destruction of an existing home and, and the repla, its replacement? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, it's, it's for a new construction. If it's, if the new construction is not, uh, conforming, as long as it's not less conforming than...
But it has to be of an, of an existing home, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, they just can't...
Where's that say that? I mean, what's, how big's the lot?
It's, it's actually, uh, four point, um, five point, four point two. Um, changes to non-conforming, single, two-family residential structures not authorized by this bylaw may be approved only by special permit, and deciding whether to approve such changes, the board will first determine whether the proposed alteration, construction, reconstruction, or extension of a non-conforming, single, or two-family structure, or accessory structure will increase the non-conforming, uh, nature of such structure.
So this is a reconstruction then?
Yeah, reconstruction.
In a, in a small lot?
It's a quarter acre lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually, it is a non-conforming lot in terms of the square footage.
Where's the locus? Where is this? Oh, here it is.
Yeah, it's at the, uh, very end of Walnut.
I, I know where it is now. I can see the little locus on the, on the bottom right.
Yeah, and, uh, the, the way it reads in the zoning, in the zoning bylaw, if the board determines that there will be no increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, uh, it will approve the proposed change. Um, if the board determines that there will be an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, it will disapprove the proposed alteration, construction, reconstruction, or extension unless the board finds that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental than the neighborhood, to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. So they're arguing that this is actually more conforming and, in fact, also less detrimental, but the detriment is not really a factor because it's more conforming, uh, under this criteria, so...
How's the, uh, how big's the drawing there now?
Uh, the, um, does it have it on, the square footage on there?
We have the existing, the probably have the proposed.
So there's no, uh, there's no gross floor area requirement, um...
What's it have to do? Just setbacks?
Yeah, setbacks, yeah.
That's the right nap, but, so it doesn't have to do, so the, the full requirement doesn't come into effect?
No, not...
And it's residential to residential?
Well, I mean, it, it, it's a special permit. If it gets denied, they'll have to bill, you know, but if, the criteria, this is, this is actually kind of different than a, the criteria is written into the bylaw. Normally, a special permit wouldn't be obligatory, uh, but this is actually setting a criteria by which they can approve, or they're actually required to approve, it sounds like, if, if they meet a certain set of conditions, and that's what they're arguing.
Is there any setback from the street that applies?
Uh, the setback from the steep, street would be 50 feet. I mean, that's the front setback.
So it's still non-conforming, but it's less non-conforming than what's there now?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
In terms of both setbacks, the street has, I know the side...
Well, the other setbacks, it is, it, it, it should be conforming, 'cause 15 feet are the, um, the side and the rear.
That's the side, but...
Right.
So essentially, it's having...
So it's 15 feet off the, uh, drive as well?
I'm sorry?
15 feet off the front too?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, um, currently, the house is nine feet from the front?
Yeah, yeah, currently.
Made from the, from the road?
Yeah.
At this point, ZBA is just considering the petition and looking for a comment, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I think it's residential to residential. The, the bylaw, it doesn't give them a lot of discretion to deny it, and I don't see anything of reason for us to, uh, tread into it either. It seems like, uh, it's a consistent use.
I mean, there was an uproar in this area when they had, when, when it went from residential to commercial, uh, type business on the, you know, the...
And this is keeping it residential stuff?
A large building, 40 by 60 foot building, uh...
Yeah.
In Saunders Lane.
Right.
But this is a very simple case.
The only comment I was gonna make was that, it, it, I mean, the, the, the review criteria is actually pretty straightforward. If, if, you know, they're showing a non-conformity, uh, that's less non-conforming, it pretty much is explicit that they need, you know, they need to require approval, so...
I mean, I don't know why we need to tell the ZBA how to, how to process the case, you know, I mean...
We can really have, uh, say that we have no, um...
No comment?
Yeah, there's no comment, we're taking no issue.
We don't need to explain to them what the bylaw means.
I think that really applies to us.
No, I don't think so, and I don't think we have any objections or...
We're not talking about, uh, land use or building use or business use, or...
Right, right. Good, no comment.
Yes.
So this memo, um, is this, I mean, how come on the second page you discuss the 968 Hayrow Street twice?
Yeah, because when I was copying, I co, I did it in three separate letters, and then I copied and pasted each one.
Okay.
So apparently, I copied the, I, when I copied that second one, um, I accidentally copied it twice. I must've hit paste twice.
Oh, okay.
And I was like, where'd that come from?
So the first, the project on the first page, and I guess, um, what project was that?
Oh, that was, that was prior. That was, uh, a month ago, or it's been about, yeah, 802 Hayrow Street, which, um, it, it was, um, it kinda fell in between, uh, I guess the last meeting that we had and this meeting.
Oh, yeah, I missed the last meeting, so...
Yeah, well, the, um, but it's, uh, it was also for a contractor building, uh, not in the water supply district, but, um, I provided comments on that initially, just at the outset, just based on the same criteria, um, you know, as we've done.
So it's like a change of use, is that what you mean?
Yeah, a change of use, yeah. Uh, so I'd provided comments...
And they stockpiling salt there too?
Uh, yes.
On yours?
Uh, not on, 968 Hayrow is not. 804 is. Yeah, but it's not in the water supply district. They have a, they actually have a, um, a, a storage...
A salt storage area that's designed in accordance with MAS...
Yeah.
DEP standards. Just to give you a little history clip, what's going on with that one, um...
Yeah, Phil Cliff there?
The planning board referenced, or the planning board issued comments. We met with the zoning board, and the zoning board had a few comments, and then they actually asked us to resubmit the additional information back to the boards that commented, which was Planning and Conservation, to comment again.
Oh.
So that's why Kirk actually had to give comments again, and Kirk was like, "Well, my comments were really just statements."
Yeah.
They're advisory.
So he's just kinda reissuing his statements, which were...
Right.
You know, condition it per this, per that, you know, stuff like that. But that's why it's kinda making its way back around again.
Okay, okay.
Does this get sent to the ZBA like a double?
The, uh, no, I haven't sent it yet.
Okay, so you'll fix it?
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I was a little confused about that one too. Uh, alright, so, well, we've talked about Nine Walnut, we're, and really, I think you can say that we have no, uh, concerns or, or, or comments, you know, other than, and no objections.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, as far as 968, um...
Which is at eight?
Which is at eight, but we're also just gonna, just, as far as the ZBA is concerned, they still have to deal with, uh, the special permit for, uh, to, what, is it the water hook? No, it's the, the, uh, Water Protection District, right?
Yeah, the issue with that is, under the zoning bylaw, if you render more than 2,500 square feet of your property impervious within that zone, you have to go for a special permit, and you have to provide infiltration. So pretty much, we had to file because we rendered more than 2,500 square feet impervious, but we meet the stormwater standards, so we meet the criteria of what you need to do if you render more than 2,500 square feet. Which, Kirk, could you forward me a copy of your comments when you do find one of those?
Yeah.
Is there anything else you see with that, as far as, uh, what do we need to get the, the ZBA permit for?
Um, that's pretty much.
Did you, uh, say on 968, on, um, will you stockpile salt on that one?
No.
I noticed, well, we're gonna get to that in a minute, but...
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I'm just bringing it up in the context of the ZBA.
Gotcha.
But at the 802, that was one of the comments. They had a, a container on-site, and that it had to do with, um, making sure that they met the state requirements, um, for the construction of that.
Yeah, I mean, there's no hard, fast rules, but MAS DEP, they do have a set of standards that they like you, they want you to try to meet, and on that project, we meet all of them. It's, it's gotta be stored on a flat site, it's gotta be stored on impervious surface. In our case, we're actually putting it on a concrete slab. Uh, it's gotta be covered, not with a tarp, but an actual roof, so we've got that, and, um, you gotta have ample room to work around it.
What, the salt?
Yeah, the salt storage, exactly.
Oh, so they can use a top in Boston?
Yeah, well, yeah, they get away with it, but nobody...
Or in the Hampshire, no top.
Right.
Portsmouth, it just blows it.
Right.
Runs away.
So that's kinda what was going on with that, with regards to the salt storage on that project.
Yeah, Boston, they can use a top.
Alright, well, uh...
It'd be a big structure to cover that file.
Here's a, I have a question.
Sure, what's that?
In, in your conditions, are your certificate a vote?
You do say that snow melting salt during winter months.
And, and Larry, I think we're all, uh, thinking about that same thing, but then we gotta wait till 8:30 to bring up the open meeting. There's an open meeting that starts at 8:30 on that review.
Well, I understand that, that's why I'm here, but I also know that you're talking about your recommendation to ZBA about that.
That's for, well, yeah, the, uh, oh, for the 968, not the 802, yeah, well, for the 968, you know, that, I, on, on that right there, I mean, when we get to that, um, the reason I was putting that, and you may, I, I figured this would be up for discussion, but to put that there would be no salt is because, I mean, they're saying that they're not, but we would actually condition that there would not be, because it is, it is prohibited in the water supply district. Uh, so we put a condition, I always think we put a condition on it, uh, to say that they can't, you know, so they couldn't decide later on, um, to do that.
But that's not what, that's not what your draft says.
The CV says, uh, yeah, the draft says it, it's...
No, I agree. I was, I, I flagged that as well, but I was kinda waiting till 8:30.
Okay, yeah, right, and that's all I'm saying.
But you might need to circle back to your ZBA statement.
But the ZBA doesn't, uh, it, it doesn't deal with the salt, they just deal with the impervious nature of the, uh, and the water.
I guess what Larry's asking is, the planning board's comment to ZBA on 968, does it talk about salt? The, let's see.
If it does, then I think, then it's...
Because if it doesn't, I mean, if it does, it shouldn't, because we're not promoting it.
Well, the only thing, yeah, it's a, it's a general comment, mass storage. I was only in the first, in the first suggested condition was to, um, prohibit specific uses that would mirror those listed in the, uh, section four point 11, uh, repair maintenance, washing of motor vehicles on-site, mass storage of fuels, chemicals, uh, pesticides, sodium chloride, fertilizers, et cetera, stockpiling of snows removed from streets outside of the, the water district, which, I mean, those are all, those come out of the, um, out of the, with the water supply district special permit criteria, prohibited uses, um, but, you know, because the, uh, being a special permit, that they can naturally put conditions that are more, even more restricted.
Well, they shouldn't mirror the watershed protection supply district, and that, those should be mentioned, 'cause...
Right.
For any future owner should know that. I mean, you know it already, 'cause you're here, but...
Yeah, that's fine.
You may sell the place next week, you know.
What I'm saying is that...
And they're gonna go, "What?", you know, so, for the sake of transparency and compliance with, uh, the town's bylaws.
Right.
It, it should be written in the paperwork.
And yet, that's what the comment, uh, says, just, in, in compasses the, uh, the prohibitions that are already in the, uh, stormwater management.
You just glean those right out.
Right, but we're not, we don't deal specifically or separately with salt in the, in our comments to ZBA, so, I think, so we gotta wait five more minutes to talk about that.
Well, we're close enough, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
Your finger.
So, good.
Four minutes.
Four minutes, and...
Since, again, there's just, I mean, the butters are just flowing in.
Yeah, right, yeah, there's so many of us.
It's like last time.
It's a line out the hallway.
Really, just chatter out in the hall.
Alright, so, well, I guess to double back to, on 804, uh, the comments were just kinda reiterating the previous comments, so we're, nothing, no, no further action on that, on the 968 comment to the ZBA. Uh, I think we're all satisfied with what you're proposing there is, is adequate presently.
Yeah, I think we can.
Good, so, uh, while we're a minute away, I'm gonna throw caution to the wind, and why don't we move forward to open up the continued...
Don't you wanna waste a couple minutes and sign some stuff?
I think we already signed.
We already signed all the, uh, all the invoices?
Yeah, we can go ahead.
Good, okay, so I'm gonna, uh...
Continue.
You know what, my watch, which was never kept great time, uh, says it's 8:30. So, uh, we're gonna, uh, open up the, uh, continued public hearing for the application of the site plan review for, uh, the construction of a contractor landscaping office and storage building to be located at 968 Hayrow Street, property owned by J.M. Dunn LLC, Business Light Industrial Zoning District, review of the landscaping plan and the draft decision letter.
And you should ask if there's any, uh...
Is there any, uh...
Any problems starting early from the proponent?
That's a fair...
That's their right.
Certainly, I think that's a fair comment. Uh, any problems getting going a few minutes earlier here?
Okay.
And, uh, good, great, so if you wouldn't mind, John, go ahead and just identify yourself for the, as the...
Good evening for the record. My name's John Moore, and I work for the Moore and Cameron Group, and we're here tonight representing J.M. Dunn for a site plan review application for the property located at 968 Hayrow Street, and Jim Dunn's here, uh, tonight. And before I get started, there was a couple, before I get into the plans, there's a few things that we needed, uh, from the last meeting. One was the landscape plan, and the other thing we were looking for is the access easement across the funding property. We had discussed how the access easement was actually shown on a recorded plan, however, there was never an official document that was created. Unfortunately, our client thought it was done, the other landowner thought it was done, it was never really officially done, so...
What a surprise.
What I'd like to provide you tonight is, we actually submitted the landscape plan, I believe, the end of last week. However, and I'll go into the plan a little bit, because of the changes in the plan, we had to move a fence, so I actually have two site plans that had to get revised, 'cause they show the proposed fence, two of our site plans, so I've got copies of that, and I also have a copy of the actual recorded, um, access easement. So we had the sign...
Were you found it, or you just did it?
No, we did it. We had it done, 'cause there wasn't one. It, one didn't exist, so our client had to...
That was crazy.
Have his attorney put together the access easement. There's the copies, and like, I'll go over the plan in a minute. I don't think you really need to open the plan, this copy's a little... So again, what you see on top is the actual recorded access easement. And then the other information that Kirk was handing out was the actual landscape plan that was done by Meredith Zavanti, uh, showing, you're looking at approximately four landscape areas on the site, and...
Larry, you want the top of the easement?
I'll use, um, Meredith's plan, uh, to show what's going on. So actually, Hayrow Street is out front, and proposed building, lot lines are in purple. As we discussed at the last meeting, originally, we really didn't have any landscaping. Uh, now we're proposing up in the corner, we'll dress up the front corner of the lot, uh, the backside. This area right in here, between the lower landscape area and the septic, is actually a graded slope because of the septic system, so can't do a whole lot there. We do have that little walkway that goes to the side door of the building, so we're gonna be doing some landscaping right next to that, and then right on the other side of the septic tank, we'll have a landscape area there as well. And Meredith actually submitted, um, also a planting list, even though they are shown on the plan, uh, she also included a planting list with a, a separate list that has everything on it as well.
Where's the access driveway?
The access driveway is actually right here.
Oh, go through someone else. I wasn't here at the last...
Yeah, what happens is, this plan will be a little easier. This is actually the revised plan that shows the different fence on it, but here's Hayrow Street, and there's an existing gravel drive that comes into access 970 at the rear. 968 has always accessed off of that existing road, so when they A and I'd this, this used to be one lot with all these buildings on it. They A and I'd the lot, I think probably about two years ago or a year and a half ago. When they did that, they created an easement on that A and R plan over that existing gravel drive. Uh, unfortunately, they never created a formal document to go with it, so it only existed on the plan itself. Our client and the owners of 970, when they bought it, they said, "Well, the plan is referencing the deed, so we assume the easement is good", but no.
It don't assume anything.
Exactly, so, uh, what was done is, our client actually went to his attorney, had the easement drawn up, had Mr. Karpenko, who's the owner of the lot, out back, review it, his attorney reviewed it, and then they both signed off on it, and then they were able to record it. I think actually today, they got it recorded. So, now we actually have all the official documents.
They did.
Here's the actual A and R plan clip, it's done back in 2013.
Uh-huh.
So, there's several buildings on this lot, and then they subdivided, carved up the lot in the front, and they maintained the gravel access, 'cause there's actually also a shared access with 966. Nobody really ever used this, this is all grown over in the back, that gravel drive. Uh, it actually starts kinda roughly right at the lot center. Throw everything on the floor. So, our client, or when they subdivided, they decided, "You know what? Just keep the existing common access and provide an easement". And our plan, we'll be removing any of the remains of that existing gravel driveway that's kinda down in this location on our property, as well as, this actually changes from gravel to pavement, right on the back. We'll be taking that off. The existing house is roughly right here, Cliff, it's ghosted underneath, and then you've got the other single-family house that's sitting back here.
They're both decrepit, right?
They're pretty, I mean, people were living in them all the way until this past summer.
I shouldn't have said that, then, that was bad.
You mean dilapidated.
Dull. I just think, oh, nobody's living in them now.
So they're both gonna be torn down to the...
Yes, yep, exactly. And so what happened was...
What's that, what's that heavy dotted line there?
This, that's actually edge of the pave, what we're doing is, we're paving the contractor's yard, and the reason for that is, you know, we're in the watershed, how do you contain a spill? You know, if you had a vehicle in there, how do you contain a spill if you're on gravel? Like, back in here, it's all processed gravel. Um, our client was looking at doing that, but he decided, "You know what? I'll spend the extra money, not have to worry about the maintenance, and how do you deal with a spill when you're in the zone two, you know, with a gravel area?"
See blue and oil pan or spills.
Yeah, so, you know, what this is, is this will actually stay gravel coming in, but once we get to the lot line, this will all be paved.
Which is why you have to go to the ZBA, right?
You gotta, if we decide to stay gravel, we wouldn't have to go back before the ZBA. We could've just, but that opens up a whole nother, you know, boatload of issues on how you deal with illicit discharges. So, um, our client was, you know, forward-thinking enough that, you know what, I'll do the way we should do it, and I'll just have to bite the bullet and spend the extra money.
Well, you handle drainage better where you're at.
Yep, absolutely. So, Cliff, just to give you a, a little quick summary of what's going on...
Thanks.
Drainage-wise. So what happens, as we said again, you get the two existing houses, they'll both be removed. I will have one building here, and our stormwater management will be off to the, uh, south end of the contractor's yard. Uh, however, since we're in a zone two, you've gotta treat your runoff before you infiltrate it, so all this impervious surface is directed to two four bays up in this location, so it'll be treated through that before it gets into the infiltration basin, and then it discharges out. Uh, we also have a couple of small, um, infiltration chambers to handle the roof, uh, 'cause it's clean runoff, you don't have to treat it first. Well, let me take that back. Uh, since we're in a zone two, um, you... Uh, since we're in a zone two, um, you do have to treat that roof runoff, uh, so we do have um, sand filters on either side of the structure, so in the rear, it's actually just an infiltration trench, it'll trickle down into the sand filter. And then be discharged into the chamber, in the front, we've got a series of impervious pavers, so it'll trickle down through that, get into the sand filter, and then discharge into the chambers. Uh, septic system's gonna be a pump, can't get there by gravity, we would've had to raise the site about an additional two and a half feet, uh, which obviously we didn't wanna do. So it'll just be a septic tank, pump chamber, out to a leach bed out in the front yard.
It's typical around there.
Yeah, I mean, soils up there were great, great soils, the high water table.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, you know, back out in here, same thing.
Yeah, I know that.
So, uh, we're actually before the Conservation Commission right now, uh, they're pretty much all set, and we haven't closed the hearing with them because we weren't finished with you, and we weren't finished with zoning. So we didn't wanna close that, and then all of a sudden if we had to change one thing, we would've had to reopen that hearing.
Same reason we're gonna hold this open for another couple of days as well, right?
Yep, exactly, because we wanna at least be able to go to the zoning board once.
You gotta be CNN before, aren't you planning a meeting in fourteen?
ZBA's tomorrow, right?
We're planning a meeting in fourteen.
Well, well, we're gonna discuss that.
But I mean, I don't think we're, we're not putting it out too many weeks, right?
Well.
Could be, well, we'll see.
Well, if the board, the nice thing is, if you, um, I know Kurt spent the time and he put together that draft decision as well, and we can review that. I mean, if the board's able to have the decision ready for that, I mean, we have no issues going to the next meeting, um, knowing that the board has already put together a draft decision, so at that next meeting, it should be.
Yeah, and that's gonna be the, if you're able to wait till, did you say the eighteenth is really the next available?
Uh, well, we were looking, but the uh. I wanted, I, I thought, the public hearing that's going to be, that we're actually setting that date for. The, the comments associated with it, it'll be, what, the twenty-fifth is the most likely or feasible date, we don't really wanna meet unless we can have at least.
Yeah, that's right, because Larry, you said the eleventh was too soon, I meant the eleventh.
Is the twenty-fifth gonna be, uh, time enough for you guys?
Not for the scope of that project.
That actually should be fine, because how, um, what's the, is there appeal period on the decision?
Yeah, there's twenty, yeah.
Twenty days.
Okay.
No, is site plan review or special?
Uh, this is special purpose slash.
Site plan review, I know the special permit is, but site plan review there isn't. And so conservation's twenty-one, uh, ten days after they issue, so we're not meeting with them again until middle of May, so.
It's all gonna happen about the same time.
Exactly, so that should be fine. And our client, you know, I think we're at a point, and I'll talk to him after this, that, you know, he's at a point that's comfortable enough that he'll probably be able to order the building, they're gonna be, you know, months out before they have that ready anyway. So, that'll still give him time to.
They don't have it in stock?
Get his erosion control in, get the site start to be prepped, and right around that time, the building should be showing up, so I think that'll be fine.
Okay, bullshit.
Alright.
So you looked at the, uh, the draft of the COV that they're proposing?
Yeah, and the only comments that I had, I kinda sent them over to Kurt tonight as well, was, um. I don't know if it makes sense, the way you list the site plan, it has the original date, but it doesn't have the revision dates. Like on page two, you know, it talks about the site plan.
Which these revisions should all be on this plan.
Yeah, you, you're talking about up here with the, um, yeah, the revision dates on there. Well, I think it was.
Kurt, can you just send with take them off?
Well, I don't think you need, I think you just need the final revision date, and what I was proposing, what we can do. What we can do is, right now, there's a couple of the plans that don't have the same revision date, because as I had mentioned and I submitted tonight, we had to revise two of the site plans because of the fence relocation. So after the zoning board meeting, you know, what we could do is, we could set a plan, a plan set, and just put one revision date, a final revision date on every sheet, so that they're all the same date, so all you need to do is just write down, you know, the plan set dated.
So they don't have errors.
January twenty-nine, revised through, and then one date.
That way they don't have an error in the document.
Right.
Where's the fence?
The fence?
It would've been easier on her. With so much fence discussion.
We were, yeah, last, we were, last time around, we were talking about the fence, kinda bending around the side of the building, it didn't, uh, wasn't gonna necessarily accomplish anything, but this.
Right, so what, what we did is, when we changed the landscaping over, we didn't need the fence running around the whole front, so we didn't have, didn't need the fence to run all the way to the street, so we didn't do that, we cut it off up towards the front, and.
Oh, I see.
It's gonna start again, obviously, on the other side of the entrance, and right here, we just kinda brought it in and just curved it back towards the other side of the septic, and then stopped it right around where the other landscape area kinda takes over. Uh, six foot high, um, what did we say? Yeah, it was a stock, exactly, a stockade.
That should look pretty nice, I would say.
And what happens?
Yeah, right, I remember the closed storage yard or something like that.
See, and what we did, Cliff, right after the entrance, it travels down this area to about this point, and it blocks the view coming off of one thirty-three.
Yeah, the landscaping is going to.
There's probably no view from the other side.
Before we had all fence and no landscaping?
Not really, yeah, you can't really see it going west.
Yeah, because when you come in this way, you've got an existing house here, and then this is all wetlands, all through there, that's why we just kinda stopped, we brought the fence a little beyond the proposed structure.
And didn't you have a comment from your neighbor saying they had no objection?
Right.
That was the one on that side, there was a letter from the neighbor, current neighbor.
Before we get into the certificate vote on the landscape plan, the, uh, the, your, oh, your lilac, closest in the, in the northwest corner. I know it's not really gonna impact the site distance, but could we maybe eliminate that one lilac?
Talking about that one? Yeah, we can take that out.
Which one?
This one.
If you look at the site plan, it's still way back from the road, but, you know, that's a pretty high-travel road, I don't know what's going on in the back, but you might have some stuff going out there.
I mean, that lilac is gonna be.
It's probably twenty, fifteen feet off the edge of the road.
It's a tree lilac, right?
It's gonna be right about here, which is almost right next to, it's that big, um, willow. There's a willow tree out there right now, giant willow that's gonna come out.
You are taking the willow away, you're taking it down so it doesn't get the roots into the septic?
It's just, it, we're gonna end up wiping out half of its roots when we put the septic in, and you know, those things, I mean, those will just fall over anyway.
Then all the branches fell off and they died, yeah, so you get rid of it, right? They're no good near a septic.
Well, so you're gonna take the tree lilac out and replace it with something else? Well, you've got a lot of low, uh, low, uh, landscape plants around it, underneath it.
And the fence is still behind it.
Right, and the fence is still behind it, exactly, so I agree with Larry, if you could just, just take it out.
Larry, you worried about a sightline there?
Oh, yes, because I, I had evergreens in front of my horse fence, we had to cut them all down because.
That's right, used to, yeah.
You can't, it, it doesn't look like it curves, but it does.
Gotcha, well, good, if, if, that seems like an easy fix and something.
I mean, if the board's okay with it, and they wanna just put a note in the file, we'll leave it on the plan, and that is that we're starting to do the landscape plan, if it looks like it's in the way, we just won't put it in, or we can just nix it all together and I can.
Nah, just leave it, and then just don't put a note.
I mean, should we put it?
At your discretion, that way.
In the vote that says, uh, so as not to obstruct sightlines?
Well, it's not gonna really obstruct the site distance as we measure, ten feet back from the edge of pavement, you know, the, the height of the eye and all that stuff, as John and I would do it, but it's a lilac, it's gonna get bushy, and it's gonna be high.
Yeah, right, right, over time, it's gonna be.
So you wouldn't be able to see a car driving down the access drive?
Exactly.
What is a tree lilac?
Somebody approaching, wouldn't see somebody coming out and have the, you know.
What does a tree lilac end up looking like, I mean, you're already.
Pretty tall.
It's listed here as an eight to ten foot to start out with? They're that big, they start, I mean, you're planting an eight to ten footer? And how big do they get at the end?
About twenty feet, maybe?
Yeah, I think twenty, twenty-five.
Lilacs grow until you cut them down. It's not like a regular lilac bush, though.
Right, it's not like it, right.
Japanese tree lilac, I don't know what it is.
Ivory.
Well.
Ivory silk.
Well, maybe we just remove it.
You know what, that, it's, it's not a big sticking point, but it does, there's, if we just take it out of there altogether, whatever, uh, whatever we approve, we should show up on the plan, and if we don't want it, probably best it not be on there, so, so if you can just, just delete it.
Yep.
You have a bias against lilacs, Larry?
How many prints of that would you want, revised prints? What we'll do is we'll resubmit the landscape plan and we'll just remove the lilac, so if you have.
Okay, one, just two, we'll do it, one for the.
So just give you two.
It gets recorded, though.
It will be, yep. Well, what, this plan is, what's gonna happen is, we'll reduce the plans, and then the plans will get recorded as attachments with the decision. Because this isn't, yeah, because this isn't registry standard, we couldn't record it.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, that'll be fine.
But it'll be there, but we'll give you two copies, yeah, we just wanna confirm.
If it were to be recorded, you just could record it as an attachment to the, uh, the vote.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I mean, I'm trying to save money for the client.
Yep.
You know, for one shrub, no, I know, you've already, for one shrub, I mean, to have to redraw our landscape plan, to me, sounds ridiculous, you know, to have several copies, I don't wanna formalize plan because we're taking out one shrub, where he can write one sentence.
Yeah, no, I think.
I think to that end, if.
One sentence.
Amend the, uh, the plant list and get rid of it there, that would.
It's a lot cheaper, really.
I could just strike it through it and put deleted, planning board.
That's fine, but I just don't wanna see, I don't wanna see revisions upon revisions because of one lilac.
Fair enough, I think that's a good point.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, me too, thank you.
Really.
Alright.
Actually, if I can steal that one copy.
You wanna bring up the other ones, just so Kurt gets it now?
What's that?
On the typo there.
Oh, okay, sure, so, well.
Some of those, like with the typos and stuff, like, can I just take the, um, thing, I mean, do we?
Not a typo, just a clarification.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, uh, yeah, on page.
Clarification up here.
Right, you have a blank in here, and considering the advocate's request for a waiver of the outlined items, the planning board agrees to waive blanking.
Actually, correct, you, you should have the new, the ones I handed out just tonight, those are the, those are the ones that had that, that's a revised.
Oh, the one I printed up, did you get rid of?
Yeah, the ones you printed out and brought with you.
Okay.
I, I, I just don't see that. I passed it around, so, let's see, I think I've got more copies here.
A lot of paper floating around here today.
I think they made that one.
I'm sorry.
I passed them around and then.
Well, so, in condition eight, you, you did mention, and snow melting salt during the winter months, and you're saying that's never gonna be an issue, or are you, okay, so you're never gonna be storing, uh, salt there? So, with that said. John, you're okay with that as well, if we were to get rid of the, uh, authorization to store snow salt?
Exactly, just stop right at summer months.
Yeah, okay, with that.
And I just had a question there too, because we talked about grass clippings.
Right.
So does that mean, um, materials?
They restricted them to one thing.
Yeah, it looks like, the way I read that is, we're allowed to stockpile one thing, and that's just mulch.
Okay.
On that condition eight.
Okay, yep.
You can't stockpile, are we in state loan?
He's not, he doesn't even want to. Nope, the only thing he was interested in was the mulch and the grass clippings, and we nixed the grass clippings at the last meeting.
Well, they didn't nix it unless.
Well, we didn't, he didn't, exactly, he didn't wanna spend the money to, to build a container to hold it from going off the back edge, so, and he's fine with it.
This is the copy that's.
This is one we're working from?
Yeah.
They have these composted facilities around the area, don't they? Don't landscape it free and over the, is that Hamilton? Ipswich has one too? Hamilton is what I always hear.
We can back up to page four. I think that there's just, I don't know if you pinned down a new one, up at the top of the page, I think there's, uh, just some words missing.
You're talking about the underweight, well. I finished that, like, I. You're talking about that, um, there was an incomplete section.
Yeah, that's exactly, it looks like you bet.
I hadn't inserted the waiver, something about.
That's exactly what I thought was going there, yep.
Because I think we did the waivers, that's, that was like done last time.
And the only other is the second bullet item under number two, it talks about mass DOT approval, this section of Route one thirty-three is a town way, it's not a mass, I mean, it used to be county, but then it got handed back.
Is that right, I thought it was a state, oh.
It's not a state way, and I think Larry agrees, um, I did bring the, it was, the Mass Highway actually laid it out in ninety-five when they did the changes, but it's still listed as a town way. It doesn't become a state highway until right before you get to ninety-five, uh, when you start approaching all the off-ramps and whatnot, it does change over in that location, but that doesn't carry all the way back to this site where it changes over.
So, uh, on Haverhill Street, all the way to Ipswich is, is a town way, is what you're saying?
Um, no, it may change somewhere else, I just looked at.
That end of it, yeah. But Larry, you've seen that as well, and you agree that that's a.
Because doesn't the state pay for?
The state maintains it from.
Maintains it.
Oh, we're right here in town, to Ipswich line.
No, where?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, picks up one thirty-three at the intersection by the back end.
Right, at one A.
Yeah.
Because we had that discussion for a curb cut for the salon next to.
Right, yeah.
White Farms, and maybe that was a state highway there, right?
But that's one A.
One third, that's one A, one thirty-three.
It's still the same, it's still one thirty-three, but one A.
Right.
So it sounds like one, it's one A, it's a state highway?
So.
Yeah.
Right. Does the town consider it as a curb cut approval, or is it just a?
That's what I was actually, I called highway just to confirm, and, um, they, apparently, the, that, um, uh, Mass DOT does have, um, I mean, it is a town way, but the, the, Mass DOT has had some, uh, ju, some, in terms of maintenance jurisdiction and also permitting. So he told me, uh, Pat wasn't, um, totally, he told me I should call it Ma, uh, Mass DOT, so I, I called and left a message, I haven't heard back, but you're saying that there's actually a map that has this stuff, that actually says, because it's actually in proximity, this is just east of the ninety-five corridor, so that, that section of one thirty-three is probably most likely going to be Mass DOT, right? I mean, um, uh, the section that crosses the highway?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, and I don't know.
And as you approach it, you're a hundred percent right, as you start heading back to town. There's a line where it, it stops being jurisdictional into the state and it's back to the town again.
I was just making sure that this might, I just, I don't have access to that map, so, I just, I called.
So you're saying highway said, it is a little ambiguous about whether they have, whether the state has jurisdiction or not?
Uh, in this particular, because there is a place where it transitions, and, uh, I think.
It sounds like you guys have looked at the maps and determined that you're not there.
Well, Riley takes care of it, so they probably.
I did put, I've already, I actually already put a call in with, uh, Mass DOT, so the question is there, they'll, they'll call and confirm it for me, but.
And just let me know when you hit back from.
Okay, okay, and I, I'll probably ask for, if there's a map that, uh, that we should have access to.
To cover it, should we, should we say if applicable, or should we get rid of it all together?
I just get rid of it all together, I think it just adds confusion.
I think you're right, I mean.
It's not under state jurisdiction.
Gene just brought up a good point, and maybe, uh, that quasi, that ambiguity had to do with what.
But I don't know for sure either, I thought that, um, Riley got money from the state for the, for Riley plowing that one thirty-three.
Yeah, and I think that's what, uh, Pat was referring to, that, and then some other maintenance where there's been potholes that the state has come in and, and fixed those, in those situations, but, um, it's just until we, I mean, we, I mean, we can go with, but we, we just need to get some confirmation one way or the other. Um, so, I, I, I mean, they'll call me back tomorrow, most of the time, so.
Okay, just let me know what they say.
Yeah, yeah, and, but we're not closing the public hearing tonight anyway, so.
So, um, so when you talk to him, the, the new medical office building that, that's proposed for, uh, the, right next to the Agawam.
Yeah, that's on the other side.
So that's, that's town, that, the town.
Well, it's also close.
So he might, get close to the Route one corridor.
Exactly.
So you might, might as well ask him about that too.
That's what, that's what Pat was saying, he said while you're out, just ask him about.
It'll be the same designation at that point.
Well, I'm just saying, why you got him on the phone?
Patrick said the same thing, he said while you're, because he's actually reviewing that project as we speak, and he said while you're out, just go and check with them, because that's in proximity to. Patrick said the same thing, he said while you're, cause he's actually reviewing that project as we speak, and he said while you're out, just go and check with them, because that's in proximity to, to Route one, so.
Right.
Uh, there is a distance that it might be applicable, but.
Oh, Route one, yeah.
You know.
All right, well, then we'll just leave that, something to look after, okay, uh, and if it turns out it's not state jurisdiction, then we'll just get rid of the bullet altogether.
Did you have a chance to read the draft, I mean, do you have any other issues with the draft?
The only other thing is, uh, the bullet item about the Conservation Commission.
Which one?
It talks, it's like the, it's right down the bottom of the page, second one from the bottom. Says Raleigh Conservation Commission Order of Conditions for Impact of Two Hundred Foot Wetland Protection Buffer. It's a hundred foot buffer?
Yeah, it should be a hundred foot, sorry.
But it's also in the zone two.
I'd suggest you just strike out the parenthetical reference, cause.
Exactly, just say the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction.
Whatever their jurisdiction.
Right.
Yeah, that's even better.
All their resource areas and map overlays that.
I think that was an oversight because it was taken from a tablet that had.
It had riverfront.
Yeah, exactly, but those are the only, you know, comments I had going through it.
All right, so otherwise, just looking to continue this hearing to the next meeting that we can put together, which right now looks like May twenty.
I got some if you want them.
Well, let's hear them, absolutely.
The first one would be the date, because I think you're talking, what, May twenty-fifth now?
Yes, you mean the, at the top, this.
At the top and in the first, on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth?
Yeah, yeah, I would change those depending on, but you're right.
Is that what you guys are gonna do, the twenty-fifth?
I keep changing it.
I would suggest that the, the date of the revised plans, just have John do that, May twenty-fifth, and we're all on the same.
That way, it'll be ready for signature that night.
Are we, are we, so we're definitely meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, if we've decided, I'll, I'll set the public hearing for the, the medical office daycare for that night.
Trying to stay away from Wednesday.
On, on page one, uh, the site, right under the first paragraph, it's approximately one acre, is it not?
Oh, I'm sorry, say that, where, where was it?
First paragraph, the first sheet, page one.
Yeah, one acre.
It's one acre, correct?
Correct, okay, one acre.
On the next page, the, let's see, talks about seven, six, I'm just kinda catching up with this revised one now.
I think, uh, it's just those contractors.
A lot of it's boilerplate.
Uh, yeah, on, on, back on the first page again, landscaping are similar, not contractors, but contractors.
Yeah, I was just noticing that, yeah, contract, contractors.
Contractors. I'm thinking that same paragraph throughout, uh, we're usually capitalized A for applicant, that's throughout the whole thing. So, the site plan review will be, date of January twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, revised through, input to revised through five forty-five sixteen?
Yeah, the revision date, okay.
That, that one revised date, John will put that on his plan, and everybody's on the same.
So Larry, that's okay, uh, we don't normally do it that way, but just to kind of take a beginning and an end.
Yeah, yeah.
And everything in the middle is, uh, assumed and can be researched as.
Well, the way that John does, and most of us do our plans, if you look at his plan, that's the last revision, number four, but you see one, two, and three, so. The site plan is composed of eight sheets, I think, is that correct, John?
Yeah, I.
Can't we look at the last one and comment? It'd be the same.
I think the, the photo, photometric layout was added to.
Exactly, so there's eight.
Eight sheets, correct. And, uh, under the landscape plan, I think the, the date for the plan is April nineteenth, not the eighteenth?
Correct.
And I think it was prepared not by James Dunn, but by Meredith A. Z. R.L.A.
It says that on, oh, I see.
Oh, you're saying up above, yeah, prepared.
Prepared by the plan.
More James Dunn, by Meredith.
Oh, I think it should.
Prepared by Meredith.
Yeah.
Yeah.
R.L.A.
She'll landscape architect, she'll boxman at top school.
Boxman.
And, and in, I guess it's now on the third page. Yeah, in deciding to issue a site plan approval, that big bold heading. Under sections.
Yep.
See that, six-two-one-one A is, is not a good reference, it should be.
Where are you at?
Uh, oh, she's deciding.
Signing under section seven-six and.
Yeah.
Seven point six, and it should say seven, four point seven point two F.
Four, yeah, I see what you mean.
Like the passing of the town here.
Now, are you, I think.
Of the torch.
Second page, I don't know what page I'm on now, where it says decision, therefore in accordance with.
Next page.
Waivers and decision. Again, I think that should be four-seven-two-F.
Four point, it's two F, right.
Rather, rather than.
Rather than A.
Than A.
Yeah. And then, uh.
Larry, should, uh, should he be writing out, you know where it says on number two, on that same page? You're putting, uh, municipal water supply protecting district, then you show the acronym pursuant to ZBL, shouldn't you do the same? Zoning by law, shouldn't you write that out?
Well, depends on if you use ZBL anywhere else in the document previously.
Yeah, and he did, under number two, the page before.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is it, I just missed it.
So there it is.
That's fine, it's fine.
It's there, yeah.
It's there, and the same thing with the MA DOT, is that elsewhere too?
Yeah, I think it's, um, like the very, well, it's just on the first two pages.
You're striking it anyway.
Yeah, that should be.
Assuming we.
Most likely.
Well, if it's short, but if it stays in, it should be, if it stayed in, it should be written out. All right, thanks for pointing out the fact that ZBL is in there and baked that too. You wrote it out. Yeah, zoning by law, ZBL.
You go through, you've numbered the, uh, the, uh, whatever these are now, conditions, but, um, I don't know if you want to mention or not that this is approved without a dumpster. And then if you do put one in, consult with the planning board, like, same, same idea that you did with respect to the signs.
Yeah.
No signings, no dumpster, go back to the board.
Okay.
We talked about that at the previous meeting.
Yeah, and then what was the one about salt, the, um?
Number eight?
Restricting the snow, snow melting salt.
Yeah, so there's not, there's not gonna be any on, they're not proposing any on-site, there, there wasn't anything, it was only, initially there was grass clippings, but you agreed not to do that.
Right.
Salt is not.
Yeah, salt was never involved, it, it was the mulch and the grass clippings, and then we've eliminated the grass, so it's strictly the mulch.
You don't have to do commercial application salts anymore, the only salt you have.
For your own property, the on-site?
Yeah, you just do whatever you need to, for safety on your own site in the winter, right?
Right.
Magnesium, quartz, whatever you.
But on the very, very last page, the town of Raleigh Highway Department's probably should be.
Now, uh, consistent with a comment we made earlier, though, with these bullets in, uh, the decision. Where we state the, uh, the Raleigh Board of Health, I mean, we are kind of, uh, indicating that this is the only area that the Raleigh Board of Health may be looking for, do we need to put anything in the parenthetical? Approved for final subject design and for the water service connection to both units? Where we're already striking the conservation's.
Yeah, just make it Raleigh Board of Health.
Right. I, I see why you do it, and that is what they need to be looking to, but, you know, we don't want to tell the Board of Health to, uh, what the scope of their inquiry needs to be.
On the subject of water, did you get that water fee issued result?
Uh, almost. Okay. Huh?
You brought that in?
That has to be, we can't sign it until it's resolved.
Yeah, that's being resolved, it's, it'll be resolved by.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know.
Yeah, the building inspector will ask you that stuff anyways, before you get out of stock construction, you know, right, you should, I do.
Yeah, and the zoning board actually had an issue with that, where they wouldn't even hear the case.
Some towns are like that, Joe.
The, um.
Well, I don't think we can issue a permit until, until it's all.
It's not in our laws, probably should be.
Well, I think it's.
Should be codified.
Yeah, I was looking, this is actually.
It's not in our rules and regulations.
Not in ours, but I think there's a general rule that says that.
In the general bylaws?
Somewhere there's a, there's something somewhere.
There, there was, uh, an article that was based on that, on that section of the Massachusetts.
The twenty-fifth is what they're next to me.
Uh, but, it's actually, I think it's kind of general, I think you could actually, they can withhold the building permit, or, you know.
Well, it'd be nice if you could resolve that, so.
Well, it'll be resolved on the twenty-fourth.
My experience with some other towns is that prior, they will send the applicant out a letter, prior, you will, prior, and they'll state it clearly that we will not set a hearing date until this gets taken care of.
Right, that, that is.
And so, since, I think if we're going to do that and codify it, then we should send out letters to at least give the applicant the heads up, you know, so we're not like backing into it, that's all.
When this comes.
Well.
So deep into the process, no, I'm just saying in terms of setting a hearing, it's good to people to know upfront, we're not even gonna have a hearing until.
Right.
In the future, I'm talking, for the future, you know, that way it's clear for everything.
When this came up.
ZBA said they won't have a hearing, right? We should be consistent.
Yeah, cause what happens is when you file with ZBA, you have to go around to the other town departments and have them sign off.
Absolutely.
That there's no, nothing outstanding.
And you don't do that with the planning board?
I don't believe so.
We never have.
Yeah, it's like, um, light department and.
And when we, when we filed the zoning board application, it didn't even come out, water department signed off, they said, yep, you don't even have one.
Yeah, that was, that was most of the ads.
But that's the point of making, you can't have the sign, they should not be signing off, and then later.
So that would, even if we did have that in our application, it would have happened still the same way, but, uh, that was one thing I wanted to point out, is that the, you know, our applications come from the rules and regulations. And, uh, it doesn't have, like, um, and this was what, um, that Lisa was actually sug, or the, the zoning board of appeals was suggesting, is that we actually do. For, with our applications, what's, what the ZBA does, and that is have some of these sign-offs before it's submitted, so. The water department should, it wouldn't have caught it in that case because there was an address issue, but, i, i, you know, the water department and others, if there's any, like, taxes or anything that are outstanding. Uh, we can actually not take the application, uh, but we need to put it in the application, it's not in there.
But the application is specified in the rules and regs, so we just have to.
Yeah, we, yeah, mend the rules and regs, public hearing at some point, just to maybe, I mean, we might want to talk about, like, if that's, if that, but we need, should do something like that to help catch things like this.
But also, it's a good catch when transactions take place, someone takes into account to redevelop property, then the town gets the advantage of, uh, before the redevelopment, to have these things paid off or taken care of. Uh, as part of the transaction, uh, rather than having to chase after we go through the whole process.
Well, I hope you can work it out anyway.
Well, I mean, he's supposed to, everything went fine, the actual chair of the water board gave his number to Lisa. And said, look, either watch the video or give me a call, but don't hold up a ZBA hearing for Thursday, because it's all set. We just need him to file the abatement paperwork, and unfortunately, they couldn't do that last night, so they said.
Why should he be caught in a bureaucratic, bureaucratic snap?
So Lisa already called him and we're on for tomorrow, so, but it'll be resolved, he's supposed to be back for the water board on the twenty-fourth, so it would be before you on the twenty-fifth, so it's gonna be taken care of anyway.
That's a good point.
Good, well, the water board was working with you too.
Yeah, it was, yeah, Jim, he only knew he had water, cause he showed up one day and the basement was full of water, cause the pipe broke. Because when he went to buy the property, he went down and asked.
Are you serious?
You know, is there anything that I need to know about? And they say, no, you don't have water. He shut off, when he, once he purchased the property, he had all the utilities shut off, once he, they got the renter off, he had all the utilities shut off, and then. He went there, like, in the winter for something, and opened up the basement door and it was full of water.
Wow, my gosh.
So he pumped it out, and once he pumped it out, all of a sudden, there's water shooting out of a, and the oddest thing is, is the service comes into the first house, runs through the first house to the second house.
What was it, one meter?
Looks like it.
Yeah.
So it was, but it was good, cause we didn't know where the water was coming, like, we thought there was water out there, cause there's an old well up, what appears to be an old well in the front yard, but nobody knows what it is. But now we know it is on town line. Of course, if nobody knows where the service is, we'll probably find it when we're trying to put the tank in.
You really can't, you're not really supposed to fire up the well till you go to the Board of Health anyways.
Yeah, we won't be using that, I mean, if anything, that well might be used for irrigation, cause it meets the setbacks for the septic for that, but it can't be used as a water supply.
All right, well Larry, is there anything else that you noted in here that you wanna?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think you did a fair job of, uh, yeah, stuff that, I don't think anybody else would have picked up on, but.
Fast side of the card, cause that's, that's on the previous draft, there you go.
There you go.
Yeah, that's one, I'll, I'll.
Good, well then, wants to continue the meeting till the, uh, we said the twenty-fifth of May, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, and like Larry mentioned, I just kind of modified the plant list, and just put my initials on it and the date of the meeting.
And that plan, that's with, with your delete on there is, is adequate for us.
Do you want a motion to continue?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to continue it to May twenty-fifth.
Seven thirty, seven thirty work for you?
Well, yeah, we, we should probably, I mean, we could continue this one to seven thirty, there is going to be another public hearing, you want to take.
Let's do this one at seven thirty.
Do this at seven thirty and the other at eight o'clock.
Cause that other one might, depending on what happens, might be, go over.
Okay.
So we got, this shouldn't take long, so.
Yeah.
I would suggest seven forty-five for the other one.
Okay, seven forty-five, okay.
All right, so we got a motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
Second by Curtis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
I like your plan, I think it's gonna look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big improvement on that project. As, you know, it's probably a good location for you.
Yeah.
Route one ninety-five.
Yeah, right near ninety-five.
Well, thanks, Ray Hall.
No problem.
Good luck. That's where I moved down the street.
All right, so, uh, let me make sure I'm looking at the right agenda.
No one else?
Is there anything else that we're, we're, uh, working on today?
Well, I guess the, uh, only thing, um, I put in everyone's agenda packet, the town meeting warrant, because, like, a town meeting's next, next, um, Monday.
Hey, I wanted to talk about that.
I'm sorry.
I, I wanted to talk about that.
Okay.
Um, okay, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, 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 I was just saying that, I, I put it in there, everybody can look at it, um, I didn't know if you wanted, I'm just gonna ask if we wanted to talk about it.
Larry, thanks for coming this evening, appreciate your.
Thank you, Larry.
My knee working.
No, only.
Thanks, Larry, for staying here.
I know, I know.
And I, Larry. Stakes getting old, huh?
Only that, I think, you know, I've usually, um, made the motion, presented these articles, made a motion and so forth, but I think it now, I think probably someone else should do it, uh, from now on.
I think it's been your thing.
Well, um, but it's, I'm a selectman now, and it's just kind of awkward, you know, it really requires a planning board representative to, to do, I mean, I just, I just think it would, it would be better.
What are we presenting then, the amendment to the?
Zoning article.
The zoning article for the, uh.
It's in fake glass.
Okay.
You're just reading the article, and then, uh, people have questions, you answer.
You gotta explain it a little bit, you know, you, you make a motion, right, the motion's handed to you.
Okay.
You gotta do it, go to.
Well, I don't know, my, my wife asked me if I could go to the meetings, we always like to send one or break, one or the other, so I was thinking it'd be me, so I'll be there, I suspect.
As chair, you gotta go.
Okay. Do you get to wear anything special?
No, no, you don't have to wear it.
Before the meeting starts, um, Debbie Egan will give you the motion, okay?
I usually second her, Jean, or something.
So you just gotta read, you gotta go up there and read it.
Okay.
Hopefully it won't be too long, and then someone's gonna second it, uh, I mean, I could do it, if you're not there, I could do it. And then you just, after you read the motion, you just give a brief description, I mean, it's, this is a pretty uncontroversial.
It's a design conflict over the years, this has some real controversial.
Well, you know, this is not controversial, that'd be.
Brian Patrickin will be there, too, so.
Yeah, to answer any questions about the property. I mean, uh, last Monday, the selectmen held an informational meeting on the entire warrant, and no one had any questions about this particular.
Which is why I talked to Kurt, I, I felt compelled to come, and then I was looking at what it was all about. It really wasn't controversial, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, uh.
We need a whole conversation.
I'll plan on being there and, and take note of the fact that I'm gonna be, uh.
I mean, I could do it, uh, from the selectman's table, but I'd just be kind of.
It's kind of unconventional.
Be a little awkward doing it, you know?
What article is it specifically, yeah?
It's at the end of the, it's a special.
Oh, it's a special.
I think it's the last one on the special.
So this might actually be on the carryover day, depending on how this thing moves.
Well, a lot of times, they take up the special first, so you never know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It could be.
So.
So R. R. is 27 here.
Beginning, really, you're pretty close to the beginning.
It's the very last one.
All right.
They always put at the end, but that doesn't mean it's at the end of the town meeting. Because sometimes they'll go right to the special, and then you, you know.
It's a leftover of the past.
Well, I think it's to keep people from leaving, that's it.
Yeah, right.
Do it that way.
That's a good way of looking at it.
Well, I think there'll be a lot of discussion.
That's a political.
The controversial ones are gonna be, probably gonna be the, the new firehouse.
Oh, you think?
Yeah, yeah.
11 million?
The way it's worded, or more? Or any amount? It's open ended.
It's a lot of money. I'll tell you.
Well, this is off the agenda, so.
Yeah, so let's stick to the.
So, yes, and so, so the selectmen are going to do, um, I think, Article 11, um, about, uh, the land that, um, Ipswich Bay Glass is giving to the town.
Right.
So they'll be doing that, okay.
Is Brent gonna say anything about that, or you?
Uh, that's, I think that, that would be, uh, I, I don't know who's making that motion, but, uh, it's not a planning board issue.
No, but it's Brent and Open Space Committee.
Right, if there's a question about it, yeah.
Yeah, and they'll be.
Yeah, you should just read the article.
Okay. But, yet, that's the only, just the one that deals with the zoning bylaw changes, the one we, we need to, uh, address. The one that, the board of selectmen are taking up, the one that, about the gift of land.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, and about the street acceptance, right, Article 12.
Will the selectmen do that, too?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Planning board should be there in case there are questions.
I'll be there.
All right.
You want, you want me to do the explanation of it, or?
Well, you can do that, too.
I mean, I, I, I didn't.
You know, that's a good, you know, Kurt, I mean, that's probably a plan, I mean.
People want to know who you are.
Professional, I mean, Kurt, let Kurt do the explanation of, uh, kind of the rationale of, it was kind of a citizen's petition brought to us to do this zoning change, correct?
Not techni, it wasn't, not, it was.
Kind of.
Not technically, it was at the request of Sandy Patton.
Right, it was a request.
Right.
It wasn't something.
But it wasn't signed by.
Didn't originate out of a zoning review committee.
No.
So, well, let's see.
Perfect, fine with me.
I think you still have to make the motion.
No, of course make the motion, but it's good, I mean, because Brent many times has gone up with various PowerPoints and things like that, we don't, but.
Yeah, this doesn't have to be that.
It can be.
Keep, keep it simple, really.
People will not appreciate.
No, this is a straight, this is straightforward, it's a beneficial.
And I would stress the fact that, you know, it's expanding the town's tax base, number 1, uh, but it's not gonna impact any residences, because there are no houses back there.
Actually enhances, it enhances, um, the kind of the commercial highway business from the residential district in, in both sides.
Right.
In terms of, uh, adding to Girl Scout, and also adding to the buffer for Bachelor Brook.
Yeah, no, that.
And also for improvements on, uh, the Weathersfield Street side.
Because right now, this is, uh, it's, it's outline district, right?
Yeah, even according from outline.
I keep calling it residential.
Yeah, but so, uh, yeah, and as a result of the gift, what you have is commercial light industrial right up to the, uh, the new town land, so that's, it's.
Yeah.
And there's no likelihood of a future, uh, development going in there, so.
No.
No.
It clarifies all the lines, and I think also the factors are cleaning up and, uh, the property on the, uh, east, northeast side, as well.
What property?
Uh, by Weathersfield, they took out.
Were that driveway?
All, they took out a house that was in the buffer zone that was falling apart, and all, and like a.
Two houses.
Two houses.
I didn't know it was falling apart.
Yeah, they, oh, yeah.
Decrepit.
And they said it was the grossest, yeah, yeah. They said it was, they said it was disgusting, and John came in. Uh, and that's all buffer zone area, so that's being, and cleaning up the drainage in the driveway there.
Yeah, no, it's great, I think it was a nice, nice acquisition for the town.
Absolutely.
That, that should help that whole area, that's a lot of white ones.
All right, well, uh, anything else that you, in the, uh, the warrant that you wanted to mention?
No, that was actually, yeah, that was the only thing, I was just handing it out for them, so everybody would have it.
Good. All right.
All right.
I did make corrections in the minutes from last time.
Oh, I do this close.
I wasn't there, so I can't comment on that.
Uh, the, from, well, these were from, uh, uh, March 2nd, and we had actually gone over these the last time, and, um, they were just, I made the corrections.
Oh.